Good evening and welcome to the October 9, 2018 Millis School Committee. This meeting is recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted on the Millis Public School website under "School Committee," and all times on the agenda are approximate. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. Secretary Kerry Roach?
Here.
Robin Briggs?
Here.
Mark Conroy and Denise Gibbon, the two other members will be out tonight. Teacher rep Bernadette Lindring.
Here.
Student rep Drew O'Reilly.
Here.
And the superintendent, Ms. Gustafson.
Here.
Here. Jody, do we have anyone signed in for open session?
Yeah.
Okay. So for action items, we have a few action items. One is the consideration to approve the 10 to 2008, the October 2, 2018 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Robin. Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the October 2 School Committee Minutes. Second.
Motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We're going to hold off on the third reading of the policy. We're going to take a couple of things out of order. Consideration to approve an out-of-state trip to Rhode Island for the chorus. Ms. Gustafson, did you?
Mr. Chair, this is the trip we take every year for English Language Arts to see the, oh, actually, no. This is, this is the chorus going to perform at the Dunkin' Donuts Center.
And that is going to be?
On November 30.
Okay. Two chaperones, 24 students, leaving at 4:30, coming back at 11:30 PM. Okay. Can I motion? Yes, Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the out-of-state trip to Rhode Island for the chorus.
Do I get a second?
Second.
A motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And then consideration to approve the Millis football sponsors thank-you sign under the advertising policy. Ms. Madam Superintendent, did you, did you speak with Coach Cravey on this issue?
Yes. The sponsors on the sign had donated to the Community Fun Day, and the sign is a thank you to those sponsors, but it does, because it highlights all the businesses in town that donated money, it is a form of advertisement. So, Mr. Cravey wrote this letter to, and actually, we had, the committee had mentioned it when he presented earlier last, was it June?
June.
June. Yeah. And so we're following up on that.
Okay. I saw the sign. I didn't see any issues with the sign, but under our policy, any, any commercial establishments that advertise, or any form of advertising on school property needs to be approved by this committee. The superintendent has no issues with it. I don't have any issues with it. Do?
How long is it going to be up?
I'm assuming by the end, just the end of the football season, which is shortened this year anyways, correct?
I'm not sure. I can check.
I can't imagine that it would be used.
There's one more home game.
Yeah, I think there's only one more. And I think it's football-specific, so I'd be surprised if they kept it up for anything else.
Good.
Do I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the sign for the football sponsorship to be on school property, the thank-you sign. Second.
Okay. Motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And we appreciate the sponsors. I know, Mr. Cravey has thanked them, but it is helpful to, to put in a little extra money into the program. So now, let's move, I'd like to move on to the student rep. Drew, do we have anything?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, on Friday, October 12, the homecoming football game is going to be played, and the homecoming dance will take place on Saturday, the 13th. Spirit Week just started today, and homecoming court members are beginning to be chosen. Senior project proposals also began today and will end on Friday.
Do you have your project picked out yet?
I do, yes.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, Drew. I was tempted to ask, but I don't want to blow the surprise, so.
Do you want to know?
Yeah, I actually do.
Sure.
Since I asked.
Alright, so, I'm going to be building a bench and kind of putting flowers around it to put at the St. Thomas Church in Millis.
Excellent.
That's nice.
Are you going to make it all by yourself by hand?
I'll probably ask my uncle to help out.
Excellent. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Drew. Good luck. Now, on to the teacher rep. Ms. Lindring?
October 11. In the middle school and the high school, the girls in grades 7 through 12 who are interested in playing basketball this year should know that there is a mandatory signup meeting on next Wednesday, October 17, at 7:40 AM in Mr. Collins' room. That's room 121. And in the high school, the volleyball for Exure will take place tomorrow. JV plays at 5:30, and varsity at 6:30. All juniors should know that in the public library, they'll be holding a free one-hour SAT prep tonight at 6:30, uh, tomorrow night, sorry, 6:30 PM. So if you want to take the SATs, that would be a good opportunity to go and do some extra practice. And then students that are, might be interested, should sign up with Mrs. Harkey for a field trip to Micro Group in Medway on Friday. And it's, they'll get a little talk about careers and show the facility, and there'll be different people from the company in various careers that work there, talking about different opportunities that are available in the local company. So, hopeful for students to see, they don't always have to go far to get a job.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to move on to the timing learning part, which is going to be a presentation on the joint town and school finance department. We are very fortunate, there's been a lot of change. You guys want to come up front? So, the town administrator, Mike Gazinski, is joining us. Hannah York, the act, still acting?
For another six days?
Six days. The acting finance director. And then the new finance director for the town, Carol Johnson, who has not started but has been appointed, based on continued, whatever, whatever it is. So, that, two weeks ago, we attended the meeting on Monday. And so, the town has a new finance director, the school has a new business manager. This is, we had prior to, and actually, just as Mr. Gazinski was coming in, we had several tribe board meetings. So, in the last year, year and a half, there's been a lot of changes and new activities around finances and talking. And then, the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the town administrator, including the superintendent, we had a very fruitful discussion, I don't, late in this, I guess, late in the summer, to kind of talk about, ahead of tonight's presentation, but to talk about how we work together, coordinate. A lot of it is around communication, because as, as people remember, at town meeting last May, the town authorized the schools in the town to work together collaboratively around financing, the finance director's role. And in fact, there's dual supervision going on. There's a direct report to the town administrator, but where there's going to be crossover between the school and the town, the superintendent and the town administrator will work together in coordination with Carol and with Terry, to kind of see that we're, we're all on the same page, and we're working together, even though we have two separate budgets, to make sure we're coordinated and we get efficiencies for our limited tax dollars, but, so, as a way of segue. So, tonight, we were going to do this presentation earlier, but we, due to scheduling, we couldn't do that, so now we're here to do the presentation, and now actually, the person that was hired is here as well. So, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just to start off, I just want to echo our excitement on bringing on a new finance director for the town. You're correct, there's been a lot of change in the last couple of years, and I think there'll be a lot of good change moving forward. So, Carol will be starting next week, and we spoke earlier and thought it'd be a good idea for her to come in and introduce herself to the, to the committee. And I also want to thank Hannah for all the work she's, she's done in working with us. She's not going to disappear.
Sure.
Anytime soon. She's going to be part of a transition, so we have a smooth changeover. And as we mentioned, Hannah wants to be able to go through the presentation. She did go through this with the Board of Selectmen a few months back, and wants to be able to give the same presentation and get feedback from the committee in regards to that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I would turn it over to the ladies to my left.
Yeah, we're going to dim the lights.
Oh, yeah. Probably see it a little better.
It will be, it will be easier.
Not watching.
Nope.
Nope, you're good.
We're good, Mike.
Perfect.
I think that works great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so just to give a little background on it, when the, the town hired me to come in and help in the finance department through the transition with the leadership there, one of the tasks they had asked me to do was, you know, and that was when the, the talks were beginning about trying to do a more consolidated, more communicative finance department between town and school. They said, you know, let's do this kind of finance assessment, where you look at, what does everybody do? Where are the areas that we can do efficiencies? Where are the areas that we can improve on? What's working, what's not working? And so this is actually something that my firm offers, you know, this, this service. So I went through and I did, you know, talk to the parties who were there at the time. Since it has been a couple of months, certain things have changed as we go. I, I didn't change the, the presentation, because this was the original one presented, but I will point out things that have been updates. There are areas that were recommendations to work on that have already been started. So, I mean, all of the changes are positive changes to what I'm presenting today. So I wanted to do that, first, point that out. The other aspect, well, first of all, I have a sinus infection, so I apologize if you can't understand me very well. But the other thing I was just going to point out is, is a lot of this stuff is just, you know, these aren't, this, nothing in here is set in stone. This is all just my own professional recommendations, based on the work that I do in my specialty with government, state and local government, and working and going around a different town. So none of this is stuff that's been decided on, is for sure, has been approved. This is all just recommendations for, you know, my own, seeing how things are running, and, you know, we don't want to go making changes when we didn't even have a finance director yet. One of the biggest things in here is finding the, a great finance director is really important, which we can say happened now. And I was part of the process of hiring Carol, and I was very, very emphatically recommended that the town hire Carol, to the point where I think I offered to hire her if you guys didn't want to hire her. So, I think you guys are going to be, be very, very, very happy with her. So I just wanted to kind of give you that little bit of background there as we go, go As we, as we talked about, the, the town has been going through a lot of changes, not just with the leadership within the town, but even within the community. There's a lot of, there's some new growth happening. There's a lot of changes being made within Millis. And so, usually those times of great change are when it's, you know, a good time to revisit some of these aspects, because as things change, you need to make sure that you're able to be flexible with the change. So, so the town, like I said, the town asked me to go through this process and look at what areas we could improve on. So, this is just kind of an overview of the methodology. I, I kind of started the process back in April and May, and going around interviewing the different parties within the finance department, which included the, on the town side, it includes the town accountant, the payroll, the AP, the treasurer collector's office, and the assessor's office. And then on the school department, at the time, April U is here, so I had interviewed her, and Shailene, and Maureen, and Kathy on the school side. I sat down with each of them and talked about what they do, what are their, what are their pain points, what works well with working with the town. And I was also trying to, part of this is also looking at the communication within the department, so, because I think that part is really important. So, I mean, first, I just want to thank everybody for being, everyone, school, town side, was very, very open with me, very, you know, even when I asked, I said, hey, what are your struggles? What, what frustrates you when you're dealing with the town? You know, and same thing on the, on the town side, you know, what frustrates you? Because we can't, if we're, if you're not honest about where the problems are, you're not going to be able to fix it and make things better going forward. So, everybody was incredibly helpful. Everyone has been wonderful to work with. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there. And, and I think the end result of, of what everybody wants is to create the efficiencies and minimize duplication of effort, which is one of the big issues right now, and then improving our segregation of duties, because I know that's, that's an issue on the town side as well. So, the first, I kind of look at the structure of the team, and then the processes, and then the systems. And then that's just kind of a breakdown of the different areas. So on the team, department structure, on the school side, at the time, and this is one of those places where I get to say that we've improved on things, at the time that I did the interviews back in May and June, there was very little to no cross-training of, of positions between like AP, payroll. So if someone's out sick, you know, it, it's going to cause some issues, because there's not always the backup there. Since Terry has been there, and I could back up and say, I've really enjoyed working with Terry. I think you guys made a really great hire there as well. So I think you guys are going to have a really great team, you know, as I'm moving off, you guys are in excellent hands. But, so, I know since Terry has started, this has been one of the areas he's really been working on, is, is getting that cross-training together on the, you know, on his team's side as far as AP payroll. So that's definitely been an area that's already been improved since the time we initially did this. And then, it's the same on the town side, you know, we have our assistant town accountant, she can do any position in the office, but not everybody can necessarily, like, my payroll person can't jump in and fill her shoes. She can jump in and fill the payrolls persons, but it's not vice versa. So, so these are things we need to work on both, you know, on both sides, is improving that cross-training. Currently, and I think this is true on both school and town side, there is no specific HR function. This is where we get into the segregation of duties issues. Right now, the payroll person in my office is basically functioning as HR as well. Certain parts of an HR function are done in the town administrator's office, and then there's a little bit done down in the treasurer's office, but the majority of it, doing all the, the actual transactional data for HR, is being handled by the payroll person. That's not the best segregation of duties. The person who's entering new people, setting them up, shouldn't also be the person doing their payroll. The best, best-case segregation of duties is, those are two different positions within two different departments. Ideally, HR would be peeled off and be a separate independent department, which, while it may work very closely together with the finance department, would be independent of them. So that's, and I understand, you know, a lot of times when I go to these smaller communities, they don't have the HR function. You don't have the, A, the budgets, or the, the number, enough people to be able to staff at that level, so it's not necessarily, you're not the only ones. And there are, if, if that's something that's not able to do, there are other ways that you can kind of help offset the segregation of duties issues. But I do think that with this new structure, there is a way to make it so that you can peel out a separate person to, to do the HR function. And currently, like I said before, is, one of the biggest issues is the duplication of effort. And we'll get into, as we're talking about the systems and the, that a bit more, but that is definitely one of the areas that has not been worked on yet, because we need to, there's systematic issues behind that, that we have to correct before we can really get those efficiencies. So this up here is what the current structure, it's weird to have it behind me, I'm not used to that. This is what your current, well, current, as of last May, structure was for the finance office. You had the finance director on the town side with the AP payroll, treasury collector, and assistant assessor, and then on the school side, the school business manager with the AP clerk and the payroll administrator. This next one is, this is kind of a recommended format. It can obviously be adjusted around, but this is just my recommended adjustment for long-term, being able to do more integrated work together as a school and town, and then also being able to peel off a human resource administrator. How that's done, or if it's even done, is, you know, up to the town. When you guys are all on one system, that will free up sometimes. We may be able to say, hey, can one of the people that's currently doing payroll move over and do the HR function, and then we have a separate person? Or, you know, do we do a part-time person? There's a lot of different ways that it can happen. It's just part of the overall recommendation that, that somehow we work out a struc, a structure where you are able to have a separate human resource person. And then, the, you know, this, we, we would still have the town, the town accountant, the assistant director of business, the AP clerk, that, no, no changes to treasurer, collector, assessor are recommended at this time. And then, you know, the thought was if we can, we get into one system, we're only doing something once, instead of entering everything twice, and we can merge those functions, and be able to cross, work across the departments, and you can peel off that human resources. This overall structure doesn't even, actually is increasing by half an FTE. It doesn't say taking anybody's job away, it's just realigning people's responsibilities, you know, as the town and school see fit, that, if, if they have the people who would work well for that task, or if they're even interested in it. So, this is just kind of a recommendation. Obviously, this is, you know, you guys will have to talk about going forward, how exactly you want that to look, but, once we get everybody on the same system, we'll be able to create more efficiencies and realign, you know, people's work. So, currently, on the teams' roles and responsibilities, both the payroll and, as I mentioned, some of this is going to be a little bit repeats, because it's, shows up in multiple places. The payroll and HR function are done by the same employee in the town and school, with a few HR duties handled throughout. The assistant town accountant can fill in for the town payroll and HR, but there's no, at the time, there was no cross-training at the school. The assistant town accountant also processes the AP for the town, and also does all our reconciling and month-end reporting. As far as the recommendations goes, as I said before, I highly recommend at some point in the future, splitting out the payroll, the HR function away from the payroll function for both town and school, and then cross, cross-training both finance direct, my own theory of, of being a manager is, anybody who's reporting to me, I should know what they, I might not do it as well as them, but I should know how and what they do. So, the thought was, you know, both on the town side and on the school side, is the finance director and the school business manager are able to fill in if one of their people's missing as well. So I think that, before, that wasn't something that was being done or able to do, and I know Terry's working on that aspect, but also cross-training within his staff to have them being able to help out each other. You never want to get to stuck in a position where someone has an emergency and you don't have anybody who knows how to do their, their job. And then, as part of this, this added responsibility within, we talked about this when we, you know, before, when we were talking about merging these, trying to work to have the finance director oversee both functions, is, that's a lot of added responsibility to what you had in your prior structure, where the finance director in the town was just managing the town. And when we purposefully looked for a finance director, and did it in conjunction with the school and the town, looking for someone who had that more forward-thinking, more high-level overview of, of things, so what's going to happen is, to have that, and we specifically hunted for a person that would fill, you know, what this, what everybody was telling us we wanted in a finance director, but because of that, her responsibilities are going to change from what the prior finance director did. What's going to have to happen on the town side is, some of those responsibilities that were happening before, if we want to free up time for the finance director to do this higher-level thinking and finance work, we need to push some of her work down to the assistant town accountant. So one of the recommendations that I've made to Mike on the town side is, that the assistant town accountant, who's incredibly capable and very, very good, that she should be promoted to a town accountant. And then, they should peel off the AP piece of what she does, and either hire a part-time person, or if, with all this adjustment, if there's, someone else has the ability to take it on, you need, they do that. But that's, you know, on the, when, definitely one of my very strong recommendations, because she's capable of taking on more responsibility and willing to, and that will free up Carol to be able to do that higher level of work that, that the town and school are wanting.
Carol, ah.
So that's the other big, you know, recommendation as far as the roles and responsibility. So the team culture. So this one's a little, you know, this one's a little more touchy, and this is where I'm talking, when I asked your staff and the staff on the school side, they were very honest with me, and I said, you know, we want to, everybody, school committee, the town, the select board, everybody wants to make it better. Everyone knows that it wasn't the greatest culture between the departments and with the prior finance director. And so we want to figure out what, what were the issues, and, you know, how we fix it going forward. So, historically, there, there hadn't been great communication between the town finance department and the school finance department, and I saw that going both ways, when I saw, when I talked to each department. There was frustration on both sides. So that's definitely something that Carol's aware of, and knows that this is something in, in another area that we've seen great improvement in the last two to three months. Doesn't mean it's perfect, but we've definitely started communicating better. We started a couple of weeks ago, had our first finance team meeting. We had Terry over, the treasurer collector was there, the assessor was there, and the assistant town accountant, and myself. And we had a town, a, a finance department meeting, and the idea is to communicate, have those on a monthly basis with the whole, with the team, the kind of heads of the sub-departments within the team. And then, perhaps on a quarterly basis, have a, one meeting with everybody, you know, the payroll clerks, the AP clerks, and have the entire team get together on a, you know, quarterly or biannual basis, to, to talk about, you know, what are, what issues have we had, where can we improve on things, and where can we help each other? You know, we had, I had other departments relay as well, that they had difficult time working with people within the finance department, you know, mainly the prior finance director, that, the personality mix was sometimes difficult to deal with. So one of the things I had recommended was, for the new finance director, that we find someone who's very adept at working with people, and working with other departments, and, you know, being a finance or accountant, you're always going to have someone upset with you, because you have to say no sometimes. And that's okay, and it's okay to have people, you know, not happy with you, but you still have to work professionally with them and have a good working relationship. So, we wanted to find someone who had that, that balance of being able to say no when you need to, and, but do it in a respectful way, and still have a, a good, solid relationship with the different department heads.
Can I just add something there? I know you're still in the middle of your presentation. I think that there is some responsibility that is on the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. I think there were things going on at the ground level that we probably could have helped facilitate more effective conversations and do some problem-solving, and that is something that, at the summer meeting, Mr. McCaffrey and myself, we, you know, we committed the committees to not going, going down the road so far that things get really bad, that, nor, nor should the committee be involved in the day-to-day. That's not our job, right? The superintendent, the town administrator, our business manager, the finance director, we can't get involved in that, but when things start to go really south, or things start to look like they're going bad, then, then we need to maybe have a, a higher-level meeting and have a discussion. And that was a commitment that I think we didn't necessarily do a good job at, and no one, no one in front of us, including Terry, were, were involved in that. So this is, this is, I think, where, we have the right people in place, and I think there's a right commitment from, from the boards and the committee as well. We, we can't get into the day-to-day, but when things start to go bad, I think we need to be, do a better job of backstopping that, so we don't go into position where now we're in camps. We can't afford that anymore.
So as far as the processes, you know, I went through the different major processes of, that, functions of the finance department. On the expense and AP side, one of the biggest struggles that we've had in doing, paying bills and doing expenses in a timely manner, has been, especially when you have something, and it's a good example with you guys, with the school committee, you, you have to come in and sign all the invoices before we can pay, you know, approve the invoices before we pay, then it comes over us, we have to enter them all, and then it gets, the warrant gets signed off by the Board of Selectmen. So just with all those approvals and signatures, and then sometimes on the town side, there'll be like the historical commission- So just with all those approvals and signatures, um, and then sometimes on the town side, there'll be like the historical commission has to sign off on it. But they only meet once a month. And, you know, if the vendors send in the in- invoice right after the last meeting, you're, they're gonna be waiting a while. So, um, there has been issues with some of the bills going out late, peop- um, vendors not getting paid as timely as they would like. Um, and some of it is, it comes over and it doesn't have all the proper documentation that we need to have. Um, whether it's the, um, if it's a certain amount and you have to have the qu- the three quotes because it reached a certain limit, um, you know, or the, it wasn't signed off properly. So there's those issues as well, which that goes back to a training of the departments that are submitting the invoices. Um, and then there's also, on the town side, we have a few departments that even though they're decent-sized departments, like the fire department, they don't have an administrator. So the fire chief, you know, who's out dealing with fires and, um, safety issues, he's also responsible for reviewing and processing his bills and sending them in. So there is, there's areas that we're gonna try and work on there to get more efficiency with, um, getting bills processed. One of the, it, one of the things, and I'm not sure if you guys do this or not, but any of the committees by statute, they're allowed to vote to have one committee member sign the bills. Um, and that will help speed the process cuz you don't have to wait till the next meeting. If you have a bill that comes in, especially if there's something urgent, that one person can swing by the office, sign it real quick and move on. Um, and you don't have to wait till the next meeting. So that's something I would especially recommend for the, um, committees that may meet only on the monthly basis. Um, and then even recommend it for, like, the board of selectmen and the school committee to consider. And, um, the way the statute reads with the state is if you do that, then that person that is responsible at the next committee meeting to give a report of what all they approved, which that's a pretty simple, you print out a report out of the system saying these are the bills that were paid since the last meeting. And, um, you know, that way they know as an informational item that these are the things that got approved over the last month. So there's still some, there's still oversight of those by each of the members. Um, it's just, helps to speed along the process. Um, and, and with that, appointing one person to do it, that can be changed at any time as well with another vote. So it's not, you're like, once you do it, you're stuck with it. It can be cha- if it's not working, you know, then you can say, okay, never mind. We wanna bring, you know, you can change, you can vote to, to take that away. Revenue, AR, and cash management. Now this part might not be as ac- applicable to the school, although you guys do co- do some collections. Um, you know, it, once again, there's a, there's, I see a lot of duplication of effort. And this is kind of across all departments, all areas of the town. Um, and there are some issues on the town side where, like, a, a, a person might come in to, I'll use a permit as an example, get a permit, and they say, okay, I wanna do a permit. Well, they fill out a paper here, and then they have to go to the treasurer's office and, and pay there. And then they get a receipt saying they paid, and they go back. And so there's some back and forth. And it might not always be the most, um, expedient way for the, the, the client, the person that's coming in, the taxpayer, um, to get in and out of city hall. So we wanna try and alleviate some of those frustrations for, um, you know, your constituents that come in. On the reconciliation process, that isn't actually, you ha- you guys have a fantastic process for that. Um, the assistant town accountant, she's on top of all of the reporting and reconciliations. She does it by like the fifteenth of every month, probably one of the fastest I've seen on any clients I deal with, um, believe it or not. So that's a really good process that you have there. Um, and then there's stuff around the cash receipt postings. It's entered, the, everything's taken in at the treasurer, paper is passed around. It comes up to the finance office and then is entered into the system there. So there, as we're getting more into the, um, updating the system and getting, uh, more usage within the system and getting people trained on the system, there's ability for, like, the treasurer's office to enter it into the system, but then it's reviewed and approved in the accountant's office. And so you get, number one, you have someone checking the entering of it. And also, um, you're not worried about if paper disappeared between one place to the other. So, um, it helps at, in the end, when you're doing the reconciliation as well. Like I said, the, uh, you know, there's, there's long-term goals. Honestly, this is probably one of the, the least important areas right now just because I think there's other areas that are, this is being handled really well. Um, I had to say something about it. But it is being, it has a good process. It might not be a hundred percent perfect and efficient, but it is a good process and it's working. Uh, on the payroll side, payroll has been a little struggle, um, I think on both sides for some time. And it has shown improvement, um, so far, but it, there is a lot of opportunity there to make, um, both through the system and make, um, and with the, um, communication process as well. One of the big, right now, um, for both town and school departments outside of the finance department, everyone turns in paper type sheets. Um, the school, you guys over here, it will enter everything in your system, and they have an Excel spreadsheet. And then they print out the Excel spreadsheet and send that over to the town, and then the town re-enters all that information into the town system. Um, so there's the duplication of effort. One of the other struggles that has happened quite a bit, um, you know, even a couple of times since I've been here and noticed is that, and this happens on both town and school side, is we get someone on a payroll sheet, and we're like, we don't have this person in the system. They're not entered into our system. Where's the paperwork? And so sometimes they end up on a payroll before we even have their documentation, their paperwork to set them up in the system. So that gets into the interdepartmental communication, um, and making sure we get all the paperwork in a timely manner. Um, and y- you know, so I think there's been improvement there so far, but I think there's definitely still more that we can work on. And this is one of the topics we talked about at our finance team meeting, um, is ways to help to improve that because, um, nobody should ever end up on a time sheet before they've had all their p- paperwork turned in and been created in the system. So one of the big things that came out of that currently is, uh, my, one of my big recommendations is that there is a formal onboarding process and procedure implemented, written up, um, and ideally, uh, reviewed and approved by both school committee and board of selectmen. I think it's important that the board of selectmen and school committee adopt the onboarding procedure and a- agree to it because then it's easier when you're talking to the department heads to enforce it when it has the support of the committees. Um, so I think that should definitely be on Carol's, one of her high-party lists, to start writing up, um, a procedure and, you know, and I'll work with her on that, to write up, uh, wha- what paperwork do we need, you know, and this, and they re- need to stick to it where this person doesn't step foot on property and start working until all these, these steps have been done. Um, we have had cases where it's come over and there was somebody who had been working for six weeks, and we just got their pa- paperwork. So, and then we had to do some back pay to get them caught up. Um, and we really wanna avoid those situations. Um, and there's, there are quite a few system, uh, capabilities that'll help with a lot of this. One of the, uh, topics that Terry and I talked about was, um, that's a capability with Immunis. Once we are able to get you all on Immunis, um, is that they have position control. And position control, as opposed to saying, I set up this person as an employee, you create positions. And when someone leaves, you now have an open position, and you can't bring a new person on unless there's an open position to fill. So it helps to control your budgets. You can encumber your budgets, you can, um, which is just setting aside the budget. So if someone, if a position's open for a while, you know, hey, I have excess money in this, in this bucket because I had a, um, you know, open clerical position over in the, one of the school offices. So there's a lot of abilities within the system to be able to manage your budget and, um, manage the onboarding process better. And you can also set up workflow within the system, um, so that you can have, you know, if a principal says, I need a new, um, lunch worker, you know, and they wanna hire someone, they can send it through, say, this is the person I wanna hire, and then it gets workflowed over to Terry to review, make sure there's an open position, approve it, and, um, you know, on a long, it makes the process more efficient and more audit trail and documented. Um, on the budget process, uh, I know you guys develop your own separate budget, um, but with, you know, we did work with the school last year about, um, the overall budget amount. The town, as you know, last year implemented a GFOA budget process. Um, they hired an outside consultant to, not me, um, to create this, uh, really great budget document, walks through every one of the departments, what they're responsible for, what they do, and kind of explaining where's your tax dollars going. Um, so that was brand-new last year. Um, you know, it, it went well. I think there's still room for improvement, so that'll be something that gets continued to work on. And, um, we'd hope to continue to work with the school on, um, the bo- you know, supporting them with their budget, um, budgeting aspects and then questions. Um, the reporting feature we've, uh, um, you know, on this, on the school side, uh, your main reporting, as everyone knows, the end-of-year report. I've done it. I know how hard it is. Every town accountant and finance director I talk to, I say, hey, if you, you, you're worried about your reporting, you should see what the schools have to do over there. So I feel the school's pain on that one. Um, and historically, I believe April was the one who was doing it, so I'm assuming Terry gets it this year. Um, but i- it, while that will primarily be his position, I think it'll be important for Carol to learn about that report and help to support him and understand it. So if there ever is an issue, you know, say Terry's out at the end of the year and it's due, and somebody's gotta do it, you know, we need to have that, that cross-training as well. Um, the, this assistant town accountant does the majority of the reports on the town side and has, has a very good monthly process for that. Like I said, part of the recommendation with this is just that the finance director with this new, with the restructuring, uh, would be able to spend more time on the planning, forecasting, and analyzing, as opposed to the day-to-day transactional, um, work that the town, the assistant town accountant could take over. I think you'll all get a lot more out of the, the budget process if we can do a better job of forecasting and projecting. As far as the system goes, there's a lot of room for improvement on the, the systematic side. Um, currently, the school uses a, their own financial, I don't even know if I'd really call it a financial system, but a reporting tool that they put all of their financials into. Yeah. Um, so they have a system that they enter everything into, to, um, to help with their reporting requirements and tracking. Uh, they currently do not have access to Immunis, do not even have it on their computers. Um, and then everything that's being done over here on the school side is then being repeated in the town's financial system. Uh, this just doesn't make a lot of sense. Um, so the biggest requirement, and I think number one task should be to get the school up on Immunis. Um, this, I had initially hoped that this would be a le- easier transition, um, because the s- the schools have such a great amount of reporting requirements. They have a pretty in-depth chart of accounts that they need. I had hoped that we could leave the school, the town's chart of accounts alone and just bring in the schools into our chart of accounts, um, and maybe use different areas. Unfortunately, that's not gonna work, um, the way that they, that the town is currently set up with their chart of accounts. We're not gonna be able to squeeze it in. So in order to bring you guys on and have all your reporting functionalities, we're gonna have to have to do a complete chart of accounts redesign with the town. Um, Mike and I have talked about that. I've given him estimates. It, it is, you know, it's a significant, um, investment, but it's well worth it. If you get a good chart of accounts, it's gonna last you fifteen, twenty years, and it's gonna make everybody's life a lot more, um, a lot easier, and you're gonna have better data coming out. Your data's only as good as the tool that you're using. Um, so that's definitely a big recommendation. I know there are opportunities. I think Mike's gonna try to get a, um, community compact grant to help with the funding for the project to get them on. But in the interim, one step that we can take now, um, with everybody's okay, is to at least load Immunis on your computers and give the, um, school staff inquiry-only view. So I can at least start looking at it, get familiar with it, ru- run reports. Um, when they're reconciling their balances to what we have, instead of us printing out reports and giving it to them, they can look at it. So they can start getting familiar with the system. Um, that's something that is, would not cost anything. It's just the time of having someone come over and load it on the computers. It's more just the IT time, um, to get that part done. So that's kind of the first step in, in the implementation. Um, now, y- you are paying about five to six thousand a year, I think, for the software, maybe a little more. So once you're able to get off that, there is a cost savings to the school there, that you won't be paying for that. Putting the school on Immunis on an annual ongoing basis is no more expensive because we have an enterprise version of it. So it doesn't, it's not like a per-license cost. Um, the only cost would be the upfront conversion cost. Uh, but once that's paid off, uh, in both efficiencies and the lower, you know, the cost savings from not paying for your separate system, uh, that's, that's not an ongoing cost. That's just a one-time upfront. So this twenty thousand, like I s- when I initially estimated that, that was if we would be able to bring in your thing. It's probably gonna be more on the closer to the eighty to a hundred thousand for the full implementation. But if we're able to get a community compact grant, you can get a grant big enough to cover the costs of that. And actually, this, the whole project of what we're trying to do here is ex- is like a poster child for what they want the community compact grants to be. It, departments working together, creating efficiencies, you know, that's exactly why the governor and the lieutenant governor created that program. Um, so I think it's a, a perfect, um, a perfect example of, of using that money. So I think you have a really good shot of, of getting that funded. Um, as far as the, the timekeeping of, well, didn't, didn't we already do that one? Did I go backwards? Uh, oh, so this was just on the system time. So right li- as I said before, the time sheets are all paper. Um, Immunis, I think the first step is to get you guys on Immunis as a second, kinda like phase two. Immunis has the capability to do electronic time sheets where, um, and you can even go as far as doing employee self-service, where the employees can do vacation requests, um, updating their deductions, their, um, their addresses, printing off their own W twos, their payroll records, all that. Um, all of that can be done through the system. It's just how, at what level you, you guys wanna use a lo- utilize the system. Um, so those are just different, you know, kinda phase two, three options for increasing the, um, efficiency of, of the Immunis system. The current way that there, this probably gets way too much into the accounting that, that you guys are really interested in, but there's improvements on the payroll side on our, in, within our department, um, on how we c- set up the, the, the benefits and things like that for the annual update as opposed, that would make it a lot more efficient. And then as far as the expenses and bill-paying process go, the, mainly the issue there, like I said before, is the duplication of efforts. Um, and then, you know, just the timing of getting all the proper signatures. Systematically, it's not an issue. It's more of the, um, the process. The one area I would say that I would recommend going forward, and I believe you guys are using this on your system, is purchase orders. Um, currently, the town is only using purchase orders for major contracts. For instance, we have some purchase orders, um, for the Clyde Brown School Capital Project. Um, I recommend that the town and school, um, within Immunis implement, um, the, uh, purchase orders across the board and come up with some sort of threshold. So typically, it'll be like anything over five hundred dollars has to go in a purchase order. Um, you know, and some say anything, um, others will say a thousand. So everybody has their own thresholds that they're interested in, but I think if the town and school were to adopt that, um, it really helps with the budgeting processes, and it helps with the year-end process of knowing what do we still have outstanding at year-end that we need to roll over to next year. Um, and it helps the depart- each of the individual departments really manage their money better. Um, so I know you guys are using that in your current system. We do have that ability in Immunis. The town's currently not heavily using it, but when you, we move you guys onto it, there's definitely that ability to continue doing that. Uh, this is just a, a sample of kinda the priorities and the, um, like a timing of how, um, gosh, I can't even read it on this screen, um, of implementing the different steps and, you know, kinda what are the priorities. I think, like I said a couple of times, my personal opinion is the number one priority is getting the school onto, um, Immunis because I think that creates a, um, what's the, I'm on a lot of, uh, allergy meds, so sorry. Um, kinda creates that, you know, ongoing effect of freeing up time, and then it just snowballs, and you have all these more efficiencies that you can get once. And a lot of that holds on to, we can't really do some of these things until the Immunis. So I think that's definitely number one. And right along in there, it would be developing that onboarding process because that can be done in conjunction. It doesn't have to be one then the other. Um, they can be done at the same time. Um, this third one is kind of more than, um, a town-side issue on the payroll, which is implementing this Tyler form so that we can do our W-two printing in January, February. That's kind of a requirement. Um, and then kind of one of the long-term one would be to, long-term goal would be to get a separate HR function from the payroll function. Um, and then, you know, just kinda, I can help in which, however much or however little you, you, the town and school would, would want with any of these implementations or functions. would, would want with any of these implementations or functions. I have my contact information in here. You're free to contact me at any time if you need anything. And then at the end, there's just a little appendancy saying, here are the major kind of changes with the, with the recommended structure and what we would recommend at those different positions look like. Once again, these are all recommendations. Now, I know with Terry, when we first started this process, the school was not sure they'd get someone at his level of experience. And so with him coming on and having all the background and the knowledge that he has, he actually has more responsibility that we have on this recommended page. Like he's doing more of the operational work, which at the time we did this, we didn't, we weren't expecting that that would be the case. So I think you guys got, got a good, a good hire there because that helps. I know that will help Nancy out a lot to be able to help someone else help with some of those operational issues, so. And that is it. If anyone has any questions.
I, I just want to echo again that this is a, this is a good thing for the town as a whole. I think it's a good thing for the schools. I think it's a good thing for the town side. We're, we're very fortunate in bringing on Terry and that he has helped in the three months, I guess it's been three months, the three months that he's been here, bringing the wealth of experience in many, many different districts and different roles. He has helped free up Nancy's time to, to, to develop curriculum, to manage teaching and to lead and not be so much in the weeds. It's helped us with some budgeting, just the, the capital planning committee document that we put together. You know, that was something that would have taken a long time in the past and we were able to, through the administrative team sitting down and then talking through this. So I, I think we're in a good place. I think you, you guys are, are going to be in a good place with the commitment to communicate and collaborate. I think only good things can happen. I do think that there is a, the two things, one is we need to be on the same system. And we have to figure out how do we do that. As much as 80 to 100 is a big price tag, I don't think we can, I don't think we can kick that can down the road anymore. I think we should see if we can get some money and if we don't, I don't think it's, we don't do it. It's a question of how do we find our money here? How do we look at a warrant? How do we look at maybe funding some of it internally and then going to the town for some extra? But is that a true cost? Is that 80 to 100? Not an exact, but is that looking?
It's all, a lot of it's dependent, usually there's a hard cost from MUNIS with their implementation. I, I give that number because I've done two, I'm in the process of doing two of these right now and they ranged between that. It all depends on the size, how many accounts you have. So there's a lot of different factors, but that's a good range. I don't think it would go over that. I think it'd be more in the, for you guys, more in the 80 range to get, to get you guys on and to get the major, major functionality there. And then you can add on the other additional functionality as, you know, as time progresses. It also can depend on how much internal work can be done versus, you know, hiring it out, contracting it out. So a lot of times the, the towns and, you know, everybody here has a full-time job. So most of the times you can't peel off and say, okay, I'm now just going to devote my whole, all my time to writing a new chart of accounts. So, so most of the time with the, that part gets contracted out for the majority because you just don't have the time or the expertise internally. So it, it can really vary, but, you know, but I think that's, the 80 is, I think, in a good range based off of the most recent quotes I've gotten from MUNIS on the other two projects that I'm working on and then, you know, what our quotes have been and what our estimates are on our own time.
And the other thing that I think is, I would echo what you said, is the HR function. From the transactional piece, right, the benefits and the time off and the leaves and that piece is one thing, but just the posting of positions, the running of, the organizing of processes. We've done it all internal, but the people that are running it internally are also running major units or departments within the school. So I think some, I think it's also getting, it's going to take a while to get to where you want to be because I think you're looking for a transactional person initially and then more of an HR kind of director in the future. But I, I think that that is something that this town, this town needs. And clearly, it's something we can share between the, the, the town and the school, but I, I would echo that. So I, I think we need to, as a committee and, and working with the administrator and the superintendent, to try to figure out how to get this MUNIS thing either funded or start to look at how we can fund it internally and through Springtown meeting. But I don't think we can wait too much further on that. So we can go into budget season planning for that.
Right. I would, I would expect that we would know if the grant was available, we would know by the February timeframe, February, March. So certainly time to add an article at the annual town meeting through the capital planning process if state funding either wasn't available, grant funding, or if they could only fund a portion of it.
So we didn't put that on last Thursday's, we didn't put that on our list because it wasn't, it did fit the criteria exactly, but that's something we can bring forward and, and bring that out. I think that's almost like a one-off side. It's a one-time issue, so. But that, but I, yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to add that. And then we also need to look in here internally, within our own budget process. The best, the best-case scenario is a grant, obviously. Karen, do you have anything?
No, I get, the MUNIS implementation, is it about 10 months, are you estimating? That's, is that typically the amount of time it takes?
So it, it can be, because it's not just a chart of accounts redesign. So usually the chart of accounts redesign is just that alone. So if someone's already on MUNIS and they're doing that, that can be a four to six-month process. And I know it sounds like a lot of time, but it really is a lot of hours and a lot of work. Usually the last two months of that is just the testing. MUNIS will run it through on the testing site. You, you go and do your daily work on the testing site, make sure everything's coming around right. And they usually have a couple iterations of that. But on top of doing just the chart of accounts design, it's going to be bringing, bringing you guys on, training. So, you know, the, the, close to, if, if, let's just say in the next town meeting, you guys are able to get it approved and get it started and we got started right away, you would really then be saying, hey, your go-live date would probably be the 2021.
Live.
2020, which would be the FY 2021. So it, it does make it nice if you do that cut over on a fiscal year. So you're not like half in one place, half in another. And so, you know, honestly, at this point, I don't think we're going to be there to get you go-live on July 1st, 2020. That, uh, July 1st, 2019, all these years. But that doesn't mean things can't happen in the interim. We can start, we can get the MUNIS loaded on there. We can start with the training. We can start teaching people how to do the functions within MUNIS. Even if they're not doing it yet, you know, we can put, do it in a training. We can start, you know, the supporting side of things and getting people familiar with the program. Terry's familiar with some of the other Tyler technology programs, which are very similar. So it will be very, very easy for him to segue over because a lot of them, they work very similarly to each other. So that'll be a great help that he has that experience as well and has been through implementations as well.
So we're looking at, we're looking to secure funding in FY 20 to start implementation at the same time, right?
Right.
So we really, the, the funding and the implementation is FY 20 for an FY 21 go-live?
Right.
Is that doable, you think?
Yes.
Yeah, we're only three months into 19 right now.
Yeah, so if you can secure the funding, whether by grant or by town or a mixture of the two, you know, by the spring and, and you can start kicking that project off, I think it's completely doable to have it, the go-live be that following July.
And what do we have to do, if anything, in the meantime? Or we, are we being held back significantly because we're not on the same systems? Or is there just a lot of redundancy?
I don't think you're being held out necessarily. I think it's just continued redundancy. You know, you're not being able to function at your highest level. I will, so I guess that is a little bit held out. But I think, you know, opening up that, creating those efficiencies is going to give you more time to do other things that are more analytic-type processes to, more value-added things instead of just doing the day-to-day, keeping things running. You know, it's, it, it takes time and, and you, you don't want to rush it and then have a bad end product. It's a big commitment, both time and money. So you want to make sure and, you know, do it in a, at a decent amount of time, but do it well. So I wouldn't say you try to rush it and get it in by this coming, even if you got the grant tomorrow. It would still be pushing it to get it in by this next July. But in the meantime, like I said, I think there are things we can do. We can start developing policies, procedures. We can do those side, side of things. We can start training. We can start, get them on MUNIS, get them viewing it, getting them familiar with it. So there are things we can do in the interim that will, in fact, if you get those things done in the interim, that'll help speed things along on the end.
Do something, Rob? You good? And then the last thing I would say is that the ability to get some forecasting is helpful because we have played this, we have to do cuts and then we find out, you know, we're planning for cuts and then we don't have cuts and then, not that we're getting a lot of extra money, but some stability in structure in what does February and March look like will be helpful. It, I think it's always helpful to kind of go through the process of looking at if we had to do something, can, how do we do it in a thoughtful way opposed to rushing at the very end? But it would be nice if we, if we knew ahead of time that we're not really facing that. So the, the more forecasting and kind of prediction of what that money that will coming in looks like would be, and I know some of it's on the state, but there's also some town-side stuff too. And I think there's a lot of new revenue coming into the town as well that some of it's on prediction. Some of it's now starting to show up, right, and, and get on foundation. So I think that, that's a helpful thing that we'll see over the next year or so really kind of stabilize.
And I think even if it doesn't go into the budget documents, but I think it's, it would be great to have some form within the finance department and working with the, the different committees to have like a three or four-year rolling forecast as opposed to right now, it's basically just a one-year-out forecast that we're just looking at the next year with the next budget. It would be nice to be able to get to the point where you're forecasting three, four, or five years out of revenues. I mean, the farther out you go, the less accurate it's probably going to be, but it's still good to have that, that in the back of your mind.
Terry, anything?
No, I just, I just want to say that it's been really a pleasure working with Anna as well. And I'm glad she's not leaving us in the lurch, to be. And I do think this is absolutely the right direction to go in. I, I can't say that strongly enough. So I think everything you heard here tonight is, is, is spot-on. You know, as we go through the process, we'll come across some potholes and we'll fill them. But, you know, the, the process is right. I think we have a real opportunity here to set a standard for the other communities in Massachusetts, to be perfectly honest. Because one of the things that's been very clear in my short term here is that Milis is not about necessarily doing things on the cheap or doing things quickly. But as, as Hannah just pointed out, you're going to take your time and do it right. And if we take our time and we do it right, this is going to be a very, very successful combined finance department that will benefit the entire community of Milis.
And if Mr. Conroy was here, unfortunately had a, a work obligation, I would highlight that he started this conversation with Mr. McCaffrey when McCaffrey was the chair. They started this conversation back in January of last year to try to bridge, bridge the gap and kind of structure, once again, putting it back onto the committees that we have an opportunity where we were transitioning from business, one business manager to another. The finance director was leaving. We were bringing on a new finance director. There was a new town administrator. It was just, it was the right time. So the work of Mr. Conroy and Mr. McCaffrey amongst others, but they were the ones that really started this conversation. And I think we are now seeing the fruits of this and I think we are absolutely going in the right direction. I agree with what Terry says wholeheartedly. So thank you and good luck on your first day of work.
It goes next week. I'll let you know how it goes next week.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So when they finish, the next is the district improvement plan, which Nancy wrote me a note saying we can just look at her presentation and be done.
Actually, I, I hadn't hoped to be able to present tonight, but I think we better table it.
I think, I don't want to, I don't want to force you.
I know. I, I'm afraid I'll just start coughing uncontrollably in.
Is there anything you want to, anything you want to highlight?
Just a couple of things. You know, our overarching goal, of course, is always to have students be college career and life ready. We have a great mission that includes leadership in it. They will become lifelong learners and leaders. And throughout the theme, we're deepening our initiatives to provide more and better opportunities for learning for all students, including those who need more challenge and those who need more support. The tiers of support you'll hear about in all of the school improvement plans. We will get an overview of MCAS and the new accountability system from Joan Lynn at some point in the near future. But the district report card, for the first time, is all green, which is a testament to, and we'll post this on our website as well. What it does is takes MCAS, not by grade level, but by school and a district, and shows you the growth percentages and the percentages of students in exceeding and meeting expectations, which is the new, as of last year, the new next-generation MCAS categories. So the next-generation MCAS was a transition for us and we went all electronic this past year, every single grade level, took the test electronically, which was great. And the difference is that the new next-generation MCAS is trying to build in more thinking and problem-solving into the questions so that students are asked to apply their knowledge and skills to solving a problem within the test. And that's a 21st century skill we know all students will need. It's not just about regurgitating information and having a vast amount of knowledge. It's about applying that knowledge and, and the skills developed to solving problems and being creative and an innovation economy. So the MCAS is, we're very pleased with ranging from, by grade level, it's about 6% above in each subject area at the low to above the state average to up to 22% above the state average in exceeding and meeting expectations. So there's a very good indicator that what we're working on and the personalization that we're doing and the standards-based learning and assessment is paying off. We do have one area of concern in that if you've looked online at the scores at all, grade eight math, we're going to need to figure out what's going on there. It's probably a curriculum alignment issue. There might be some instructional issues and we're developing an action plan to address that right away. But I can say it's excellent work that, you know, we're not teaching to the test. We're not teaching to the MCAS. We're pursuing great project-based learning, hands-on, relevant projects with personalization, having students have more voice, choice, and agency. And it's, our belief was that if we're doing it right, it'll show up in the scores. We're a small district, so next year, things could be different, you know. We don't, with the new legacy MCAS, we, we usually do three-year rolling averages and are able to show trends. Well, this is only year two of the, the next-generation MCAS. So we can't do rolling trends yet. But we're pleased and we believe that students in Milis are benefiting from strong social-emotional foundations, the tiers of support that we have both in the social-emotional learning and the academic tiers of support. We've increased, we used to have seven AP courses offered. We now have 11. We have 90%. We have 90% of our kids going to four-year colleges, and it's, actually, I might have misspoken there. That might be 90% of kids going on to college. I'll wait, we always have a great presentation by Mark Adiki, but I did get the, the data from Mark Adiki and Riley Dunn and Mr. Malaney. So things are trending in the right direction, and we're pleased. Some highlights on MCAS, especially grade four ELA in math, exceptionally good. Grade seven, 22% above the state average in ELA. Grade eight math, 19% above the state average in meeting and exceeding. And what this shows us is the grade levels where we have more time devoted, because we have double blocks of time, it pays off. So grade seven, we have double ELA, and it pays off. Kids do really well. And grade eight, we have double math blocks, and it shows up. And, but again, we're not teaching to the test. It's just nice to know that what we're doing also is captured in a test that has moved toward more problem-solving and application of skills.
So Nancy, thanks for the report card. When Joan comes in to report MCAS, she'll also show the comparison against the DART districts, not just the state, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Well, yes.
I would like, I, we've done that in the past. We do the DART. I get the state, but we should look at the DARTs as well.
Yep. Yep. So the, the school improvement, district improvement plan in general follows along. We, just a couple of weeks ago, we had another accolade. Boston Magazine included us in the top 60 high schools in the state. We still rank in the top 5% to 7% in the state. So we're, we're continuing to get accolades. It's very much the same focus, deepening our focus on personalizing learning, but with a couple of things that Joint Finance Department is a wonderful and innovative approach that we're working on, where we have a lot of capital improvements going on right now with baseball field, the auditorium, the bathrooms. There's a, John Engler's juggling a lot of projects, and that earmark money is, is funding a lot. Of course, the Clyde Brown building project takes up a lot of our time. And, you know, I have, just this week had technology and phone meetings, et cetera. So the, but in general, we're, we're looking to not only expand learning opportunities for kids, career opportunities, that you heard about one of our, one of our trips, so that kids are more aware of what real-life careers are like, not just they think they might like something, but they go and, we're in the process, unfortunately, our 21st century careers coordinator moved to the Cape, and so we're in the process of hiring a new person. It's a stipended position, but getting that rolling, online registration for families and, and automating all of our process, payment processes, that's been very productive and any nice efficiencies that are happening through that. We do have two curriculum things that I'll mention, along with continuing to expand our STEAM, science, technology, engineering, and art mathematics integration through the elementary school and more opportunities at the middle high school. We are also having to align our math curriculum because the state has changed the math frameworks, and we're out of alignment. We need to do some work there. We have a consultant coming in to work with our teachers next week. And then the new state frameworks for social studies require us to have civics and U.S. government at grade eight. So we'll be working on a transition plan for that. And we'll be, you know, getting a lot of input from, from teachers on how to transition so that students still get a real robust introduction to ancient and world history in the middle school. I think that's about it. Thank you. I made it.
You did.
Good job, Nancy. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is I want to go back to an action item, is to consideration to approve the third reading of policy 5.2.2. We did, we waived the first reading last week, and then we did the second reading. So in order for a policy to be enacted, we need to do three full readings. And so if there is a desire, we can, if someone makes a motion, I will do the reading. If we get a motion in a second, we have to get a motion.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we read again the proposed.
Third reading.
The third reading of the proposed revised policy of the 5.2.2 in middle school mastery of course standards. Second.
Motion's been voted in seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Actually, so, yeah, so we have to vote yes, and then we'll do the reading. That's right. Yes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I will do the, the third reading. Middle school mastery of course standards. A variety of information is gathered to determine successful course completion. Classroom measures of content and skills, performance tasks, and observations provide information relative to a mass, to mastery of course standards. The following represents criteria for successful course completion. Students receiving traditional grades must demonstrate a year-end average of 60% or better in a course. Students receiving standard-based ratings must achieve grade-level mastery three, which is a three, and a majority of the standards identified for a course on the report card at the end of the school year. If a student does not demonstrate successful course completion, then the student will either successfully complete a summer school, summer school, school, a summer school course or a school-designed instructional program, which may include tutoring in the content area at the discretion of the principal. If a student fails to demonstrate mastery of the content and the skills of two or more courses, then the student will be considered for retention. We waived the first reading on 10/2/2018. We did the second reading on 10/2/2018, and tonight is the third reading on 10/9/2018. Any comments, questions, concerns?
No.
So that is now policy. So the one question I have, Nancy, is anyone who fits these two criteria, will they be notified, will their parents be notified at the end of the school year?
Yes.
Is that, we don't have to necessarily put that in the policy, but that is the procedure around this policy.
Procedure.
Okay. Everyone will be notified.
Yes, and as Mrs. Knowlton mentioned last time, they, it would not be, we would not wait until the end of the school year. They, there'd be, in fact, they've already started having meetings with parents. A lot of team time right now is, is meetings with parents, and it would be an ongoing dialogue with, because this would be a group of students that we have concerns that they're not making progress. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't wait till the end of the year.
Okay.
But yes, absolutely, they would be communicated with.
Okay. Do you want to quickly go over the enrollment, if there's been any changes?
Oh, yes. Couple of, a little drop in enrollment due to, we found out that students had actually moved out of districts, so they didn't show up in September and tracked it down, and three students had moved out in the high school, and so that accounts for the drop-in enrollment.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the chair's report. I put strategic planning, and I want to just carry strategic planning just in case anything ever comes up on that. I don't think there's anything new under that right now. Nancy and the administrators have started to look at some of the questions. I believe she has kind of farmed the questions out to individual leaders. There will be a discussion on the 20th, strategic planning, oh, the 23rd, sorry. Strategic planning slash budgeting for next year, which is all part of the same process. So Jody, let's just keep strategic planning under the chairman's report, and then if there's nothing to report, we'll just move on. I also put the capital planning committee, and as discussed with during the finance department presentation, we had a finance committee meeting, I'm sorry.
Capital planning.
A capital planning committee meeting that went.
We did.
And then we did go to the finance committee. And we put together a, I believe it's in everyone's packet, a five-year plan, and now we have a 10-year plan at the request of the chair of the capital planning committee. And I appreciate the quick work done by Terry and Nancy after a lengthy phone conversation on Wednesday afternoon to kind of put things in buckets. And we had a very elaborate, detailed plan, and I think it helped clean it up and kind of just organize it in a more easy-to-use format for the capital planning. We'll, we'll always have the more detailed thing kind of in the background, but so I, we, maybe a rumor on the street is that maybe our plan that we put for the capital planning was one of the better ones that.
That is the rumor.
That is the rumor. I've heard directly from someone on that committee that we put together a good plan, and now I think it's still incumbent upon us to make sure that that's a living document, and it's not just.
Absolutely.
Something set in stone. And, you know, Tetra Tech did a good job and helped get us ready for the Clyde Brown project, but I think continuing to make sure that those are real numbers and real projects and taking off what we've done or what we don't need to do and reprioritizing is important. But I think we took a good first step in that direction by really making that a, a working document. So thanks to the hard work on that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Roach and, and her intern for getting the Tetra Tech study into an Excel spreadsheet. That made all the difference because then we could manipulate things, and that was a huge undertaking. Thank you.
Thank goodness for interns.
CW must be proud.
Yes.
Thank God they're not viewing these. Hopefully not. And then, it was done, it was done after hours.
It was very relevant.
Relevant.
And then last, standard-based report card survey. Are we making progress on the survey?
Yes. And I'm sorry, I did not, was not able to touch base with Mrs. Knowlton today, but we are.
Can we have the final draft on the 23rd?
Absolutely. She has.
Please.
Yes, absolutely. She's discussed it with her teachers, with her school site council.
So.
So they have some suggestions that we'll.
Why don't you send them ahead of time?
Yeah, we'll send out ahead of time and, and try to, maybe even by the end of this week, send you that.
So when she sends them, please have her highlight what they are, so it's not just all in one document.
Okay.
Meaning either, it may not be track changes, but some notes or something so we know exactly what they are.
Okay.
All right. Subcommittee reports. Denise is not here for the elementary school building committee, but anything, Nancy, jumping out, or is it just?
Actually, as I mentioned, we, we've been working very hard with, on the technology, furniture, equipment, FFNE furniture.
Fixtures.
And technology and, and phone system. We've had two meetings around this week and last, around trying to figure out if we can integrate with the town, our phone system with the town. Terry's been doing some excellent work on that as he's, has experience in his vast past of experience in building middle high schools. So that, and then infrastructure, networking, meetings, moving, moving ahead.
Okay. We'll say, the building's still, it's being built as we speak. You save, you save your voice.
Yeah.
Correspondence, we do have. There is school committee correspondence. October 9, 2018, Dear Milis School Committee, I'm writing to request the committee's consideration to dedicate the new outdoor basketball courts to Paul Gary. Coach Gary not only coaches the freshman girls' basketball team, he dedicates countless hours to anyone who wants to put in extra time. If you are looking for Coach Gary on the weekends, you will most definitely find him coaching the groups of kids at one of the town's outdoor courts. He is one of the reasons why I have such a love for the game. We, the players, would like to be able to show our appreciation by having the new outdoor courts dedicated to him. We fully commit to fundraise for any costs that are associated with installing a sign or bench for him at the courts. Attached to this letter, you will find signatures of other basketball players who support this request, along with an estimate for two different types of signs. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to exploring this possibility with you. Sincerely, Haley Roach.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea, and one sign is $318.90. Sign two is $1,444.80. Hopefully this helps. Both prices include installation. Thanks. So there are a couple examples of signs, and then.
There's approximately 50 signatures.
Thank you, because I was just going to fumble through that.
Of students, all basketball players.
Of students, which I think this is great. So I will say, I don't think we've ever had this request. I think it's a very reasonable request. So the, the bigger question is, are the basketball courts, are the, are the baskets installed yet?
Well, I think she means the new.
The new one.
The brand-new one.
Oh, not this one.
So a year from now.
Oh, those are, now, those are not our courts.
So the question is, is it town property or school property?
It's school property. That's now.
The basketball courts?
Yes.
Where they're going to put them? I thought they were putting them way out back.
No, they're all.
Oh, they're going back over here?
I think so.
So here's what I will say. If it is, if it's going to be on school property, then it would be our decision. If it's not on, if it's on town property, we can help, after we have a discussion amongst all of the committee, we can forward this to the Board of Selectmen with our.
Sure.
Support and encouragement, and then Haley and her 50 friends will have to pack a meeting. I think this is a great thing. And I don't know him personally, but as I walk by that court every Saturday and Sunday this summer, he was out there in the heat of the day.
Continues to do that, yes.
Every, I know, I saw, I saw you there a few times. He's out there. He is, he is definitely working hard from what I see, and I think this is a great thing. I think this is a.
And this was the kids.
A mature.
I, I helped them put it together, but this was the kids' idea.
And I, I think this is, I think this is a great thing. So I think if the question one, what we have to do is determine exactly where the courts will be. Maybe at the next elementary school building committee, we can.
Yeah.
Figure that out. And I still think, I speak for myself, but I think if this is a town thing, I think we could help write a letter of support for the students as they go over to the Board of Selectmen. So this is great. I will, so Jody, do you need to make a copy of this, or should I, can I, can I get it back after, so at the next meeting, so I have it for our records?
Anything that you discuss in the meeting should be presented in a copy.
But then I can get it back or, or just make a copy. So that, that's, we very rarely get correspondence, and I will say that that is great correspondence. Please thank Haley, and I know she was one to, to present. This is a, a really good thing. It was well, well-received. And then lastly, we have an executive session. We're going to go into executive session, not to return to open session, so I need a motion to go in executive session, not to return.
Do I take this one? Go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Roach.
I make a motion to leave open session to go into executive session, not to return to open session.
And then you have to read this, you have to state the reason.
Oh, the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Milis teachers and. with the Milis teachers and clerical. Second.
Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Ms. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Kettleman, oh, yes. So moved, we are going to go into executive session, not to return to open session. The next meeting is October 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.